To the school committee, Monday, August 27th, 2012. Hopefully, everyone had a very distinct, memorable back to school and hopefully that may be with some new parents in the new school year. I'm just gonna take a minute and just introduce the panel up there so if you have new viewers up out there. And also too, this time of year, parents may be calling, questioning school committee members about possibly some of the issues. And I'll just very briefly review, not just for the board but for the people in the audience, the roles and responsibilities. And there is a very lengthy advisory operation governance that comes with that. And I'm just gonna paraphrase just a couple items so people just understand where we stand and what our role is in the role of your superintendent and role of your principal in running the buildings. First of all, just introduce, I'm your chairman, Daniel Koonen. To my left is vice chair Sarah Gosher. And Ms. Alice Walker. This is Susan Nervelli. This is Brenda Ennis. At the end is our student representative, Zach Trombley. To my right is your superintendent of schools, Mr. Alan Himmelberger. To his right is our business manager, Mr. Richard Mathew. And our recording secretary is Ms. Jessica Kennedy. So this is who we are, and we are your Oxford School Committee. Just very briefly, in 1993, in the Education Reform Act, really strengthened the position and defined what the position is of education's law and regulations and advisory on school governance. Basically, your school committee consists of policy. Some of the areas that we include are management and leadership, budget, budget and staffing. Part of the state law is that we employ the superintendent. And to paraphrase, the superintendent and then employs the principals and they empower, they have the empower over their building. So as a parent in your home, you say, "I don't like, I don't like the teachers my kids just got, and you wanna call a school committee member and think that we're gonna fix it." I'm sorry. Okay? The governance of the building relies within the principals. The principals are employed by the superintendent and the school committee employs a superintendent. As well as staffing levels. And our other big policy is budget and policy. That we recommend, that based upon this board's and input from the schools and school councils' recommendation, we prepare a budget, send a budget to town meeting, and then we administer that budget. And additionally, staffing, again, is principal-based. Okay? If our board members wanna just chime in or anything maybe that they have heard, seen over the years, I would open the floor very briefly. I know it was not an agenda item, but I just wanted to talk a list a little bit about budgeting, staffing, and just the role of this committee. Ms. Ennis, go ahead.
If I could, I would just like to add to that. When you hear from a parent, don't take what they say at face value. The best thing to do is keep an open mind. When you read something in the newspaper, don't think it is exactly as it says. I think the best thing to do is to review the information with our superintendent when it's necessary, talk to the chairperson when it's necessary. But just because a parent is either upset or even happy, say, "Thank you very much. I'll look into it," and leave it at that. I think it's very dangerous for anyone on the committee to give advice outright or say that they will get on it, so to speak, or something like that. I just think that that's dangerous and it, it won't bode well in the end.
Thank you, Ms. Ennis. And again, we're talking about from this committee's side is policy, operations belonging back in your schools, your teachers, your principals. And also too, they do have advisory councils, which you should all be getting some newsletters, letters home in about a month or two, looking for volunteers for those where you as a parent can have the opportunity for input in your son's or daughter's education in schools. Okay. With that being said, let's get into the agenda for this evening. The first item, the approval in minutes from August 13th, I will hold those at this point. There's a couple of small changes to those. And as we go through, unfinished business.
Nothing?
Nothing on that. New business? New business, we have the surplus technology and equipment. And I believe Mr. Tran has talked about that in our packets last week. We received a very, rather extensive list of that we're looking to surplus, which means to dispose of. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we're looking at a bunch of numbers and everything says, "Computer, computer, computer." And Tran, the floor is yours. Please explain.
So as we go throughout the year, and in particular the summer, we refresh computers in different places and move things around. Our plan has always been, since I've been here, since we do the map testing and a lot of our students visit the computer lab, we always put our newest computers in the computer labs. From there, they go to teachers, and then after that, random places if we need them, and then, and then, and then out. This list comprises the technology that we'd like to retire this year. It seems long, but computers and monitors are listed separately. And the other thing that takes up a little bit of this list are some TVs. We haven't retired any TVs. We've been collecting them from various locations around the district. We're not necessarily purchasing TVs anymore, replacing them. Initially, many teachers had them in their own rooms. We're now using more of a sign-out technology, so we buy a better TV. And we have one in the media center here now for the high school that you guys, you approved in June. Same thing in the, in the middle school and the elementary schools as well. I can certainly, you know, talk about some of these things more specifically. At the top, you'll see we have a list of Acer Powers. Those machines were bought the summer of 2007 when I first started. The first thing, one of the first labs that we refreshed when I came in was the lab in the media center here at the high school. So those machines are now five years old. Going down the list, anything that you see where it says the, the brand is MSI, those were machines that were actually purchased when this building was built. Those were MSI machines.
So this is back in 1969?
No, 2002.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm looking at the high school. I'm looking at the high school, wait a minute.
There's nothing on that, on this list that's quite that old. There actually may be a TV or two on there that, that might be that, that old.
Remember, someone said that was very old. Okay, thank you. I apologize for that gaffe. That was until, thank you.
On the third page, we have a list of monitors and computers. Those actually came initially, they spent six years in room 104 at the middle school. And Mr. Wells, a year ago, last summer, asked if I could put a computer lab downstairs on the lower floor. And we brought 17 machines over from the middle school as we replaced that lab and brought them downstairs. This summer, we replaced some computers at the middle school and the, in the media center and brought newer machines down. So those machines are eight years old. And that, that, most of that page is the monitors and then the computers from that particular, particular lab. And then again, there's some random machines, some printers. At the bottom of the fourth page, we have several printers. There's one particular model that was, that was purchased probably about eight years ago that has a spring. When that spring pops, we can't, we can't fix the carriages. And then the very last page lists 30 laptops that were bought as part of a grant that I received my very first year, Project Tech. It was a, a science grant. And those 30 laptops were here at the high school in the media center, and they are now five years old. So batteries are expensive to replace, so the batteries, they just don't, they just don't last anymore. Can't use them for more than one period. They're also an older operating system. We're now upgrading everything to Windows 7. So maintaining those has become difficult. If there's any other questions, anything more specific than that?
All four questions. Let's go to you first, and then Ms. Ennis.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Ms. Gosher first.
Oh, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What will we be doing with these? What?
Well, when we retire something, when something dies that we can't fix anymore, we can't upgrade anymore, we take out all the parts that we can use. If there's a remnant that we can put into another machine, we take those parts out. We also take the hard drives out. We don't send anything away with a hard drive. We collect it, we have a room downstairs where we collect it. We inventory it and catalog it. Once you allow us to retire it, we have a recycling company that comes and picks them up.
And now, does that recycling company pay you for that?
No, but we don't pay them for the, for the equipment either.
Okay.
We used to be able to bring them to the town when they had recycling days, but then we were gonna get charged for that. So we don't wanna pay to dispose of anything.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
Ms. Ennis.
Just wondering, on your next report, would it be too much to ask to put the year, the age of how old some of these are?
Sure. It's, it's, it will be easier as we move along, 'cause a lot of this equipment was, you know, some of it I know. I mean, on the first page, there's two Fujitsu laptops. I purchased those laptops in my second year of consulting here in Oxford. That was 10 years ago. You know, so some of this I know because I was a consultant before becoming the tech director, but a lot of this equipment, other than the things that I pointed out specifically, were purchased, you know, before my time.
And, and what is the average life of, say, say, forget the laptops, but a regular...
Our refresh plan is five years.
It is.
Any good refresh plan is about five years. And more specifically, not so much the fact that the, well, the computers are outdated and, you know, we want our students to be able, you know, to be able to work on, you know, technology that, you know, same technology they have at home. But maintaining them, you know, it's the old machines that we, we constantly have to visit on a regular basis. Those are the machines that give us the most trouble and cause, you know, cause the most headache.
I'm just gonna go off topic for one minute while I have, have you here. Last year, we had talked about iPads, possibly, you know, looking at grants, trying to bring them, integrate them into the system so that kids are not carrying around 40 pounds of textbooks, because we can put every textbook, I think that's what we discovered, right, can go on the iPad. Have we done anything with that? Or is there any companies out there that are saying that they'll work with the school district? And the other side of it too, let's say that we can't get a grant or we can't have a company work with the district, what would be the cost per pupil for us? I think when we came down to, I think with textbooks, I think we were ranging around 500 a student, I think it was, somewhere in there. Because a textbook is about $100. They have between three to five of them in their backpack.
Well, in my budget for this year, I did budget for an iPad cart at the middle school. And in June, the committee approved for us to buy some computers and iPads for the high school.
Right.
So each, both the middle school and the high school have, now have an iPad cart of 30. We've been running trainings, I think I showed that in my end-of-the-year presentation, trainings to, you know, get people to understand what an iPad is and how it can be used and what the benefits are in the, in the, in the school environment. One of my goals this year is to put together a committee to look at one-to-one in Oxford and what that will cost.
That's great.
It's not so much just the iPads, but you, you also would need, you know, district-wide wireless or building-wide wireless for those iPads. I mean, you know, you certainly could access the iPad and the textbooks, but we want our students to have other resources, resources that require, you know, you know, internet connectivity in every, in every building.
Well, I think that they're amazing, what they do with our special ed students.
Correct.
Especially our non-verbal. Suddenly, they become verbal. It is unbelievable, the things that I've been able to witness, for students that don't communicate at all, but they have their iPad, and there they go, you know? So I think they're something really, I'm hoping that this district, you know, we're not a huge district, maybe we can do something.
So we've been, so again, I wanna put together a committee that will look at that through, throughout the course of this year. And visit schools like Burlington, Mass., that's been doing it now. They're going into their second year. My hometown of Grafton, every high schooler has an iPad. Chewsbury is doing it. So, you know, looking at the growing pains, the do's and the don'ts that they're experiencing. Anytime you implement that kind of technology, there's always lots of things that you have to learn. On the backend, we are preparing our network. There's some backend stuff that we are doing to make sure that we can accommodate more devices on our network, regardless of whether or not we have the wireless, being able to accommodate those when the time comes. So looking at the devices, looking at the cost, looking at the licensing for the textbooks is gonna be something unique. Where do you start? A lot of districts are doing a lease-to-own or a leasing option with Apple, so that there's kind of a built-in number that we just kinda keep going every year. And, you know, over the course of three or four years, the devices just kinda come in and come out, so that you're not left in five years, you know, you're not paying a lump sum and then in five years, you, you know, you...
Keep it rotating.
They just keep it, you know, kinda keep it rotating. So there's lots of pieces to look at, you know, when, when we're doing that. And the other piece of that too, I think, that we also have to look at is, you know, even our website, you know, and our classroom pages, how user-friendly is our website on an iPad?
Yeah.
All of those pieces kinda need to come together and, and be worked out and figured out and kind of the long-range plan.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome. Okay. Would you go, Ms. Nervelli, and then Ms. Gosher, and then I have some. And let's, I know we're talking about this list, and Ms. Ennis talked about the Apples. Let's stay away from that Apple, the iPads we're talking about later. I'll just keep the dialogue to this thing right now. I think that's exciting, and we can talk about that at a later date, but right now we wanna talk about what else is in front of us.
My assumption is that none of these are in use. They're all being stored somewhere.
Correct. None of them are in use right now.
Ready to go, goodbye.
Yep. We don't do anything without your approval.
And so then, over the past few years, we've replaced all of these items that had to be removed?
Well, I mean, yeah, you know, we'll get a, we'll get a call or an email at 7:00 in the morning that so-and-so can't log into their computer. We do everything to fix it, but, you know, every once in a while, one dies, and we don't bring a list to you every, 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 we, we hold on to them and do it all at once.
Gosher.
You stated that we were gonna upgrade to Windows 7, correct?
We are on Windows 7 now.
Okay. Now, Windows 9 is coming out, I believe, in the next month or two. Wouldn't that be a wise choice for the students?
No, we'll probably skip it, just like we skipped Windows Vista. We went from XP, there's, it's almost impossible to get all of our machines on the same system at the same time. And if we tried to, to install or make use of every operating system, we'd have six of them. So we had Windows 2000, we went to XP, we skipped Vista, we went to 7. We'll probably skip the next one, continue using, as long as Windows 7 is available to us, we'll continue using Windows 7. It just makes using computers in the district for our students and our staff so much easier when they can go from one machine to the next and see the same operating system.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I just have a couple of questions. So just what I take from that last conversation, you basically have one image when you go out and you're imaging, imaging a machine, you have one image, and it's pretty universal?
For the most part, yes. There are a few tweaks, you know, some of the things that the elementary schools use, the, the high school doesn't. So there are some things that we take off or add on depending on the grade level or the, or the teacher.
So you're looking at compatibility?
Correct.
When someone's gonna come to me and say, "Hey, look, you know, my machine at home is seven, eight years old, still works just great. How come these aren't?" And how, and how would you respond to that?
The number of people and users that are on them during a given day. I mean, you figure, you know, all of our labs get lots of use in, in every building. And there are seven or eight people logging into a particular computer on a given day for 180 days, you know, 180 days a year. A lot of web surfing, you know, a lot of applications being run. And again, we wanna make sure that, you know, that, you know, especially in the lab environment, a teacher can't bring their student to the lab if four of the machines aren't working that day because, you know, they're down, they're broken, the, you know, the, the video's not, not, not working, or the mouse and keyboard or something got broke with the CD drive. So making sure that our labs are up to date and that our teachers can, can, can know with a surety when they sign up for that lab, they can go in, everything's gonna work, there aren't gonna be any problems. And that's why, you know, as, as time goes on and we lose one or two machines in the lab, we then take that lab and we start bringing them into classrooms and stuff, because, you know, if you only have one or two machines in the classroom, as long as those two match, there isn't much of an issue.
And roughly, what's the percentage of classrooms that have computers in them?
Every classroom has at least one computer.
Very good.
Yep. Mostly because of our initiative to use websites, to use School Fusion, to have classroom web pages for iPass and iParent and email communications with parents. So every classroom has at least one computer. Depending on the classroom and the content area, they may have more.
And the same with the printers. I was looking at some of these printers, like the, like the Deskjets. Once a piece goes, those are throwaways, right?
Yes.
You really can't fix those.
There's nothing that we can do. And we are...
Just like, just like when you had the old days with a VCR. Your VCR broke, you can't fix it.
Yeah, it's, it's...
They may be thrown out.
Yeah, there's, and that, there's that particular model there that, you know, I, when my guys call me that, you know, it's a 6980. I, you know, I know. It's like, okay, you know, the spray, it's one spring that we know on that particular model that, that goes. And we are moving more towards laser printers and, and more printer sharing. So, you know, everyone doesn't need to have their own printer, especially now we're doing so much on the website and with email and, and with iPass and, and, you know, digital communications as opposed to printed.
Yeah, I, I discarded my 6980 probably about four or five years ago.
You familiar with that model?
Yeah, I had that model. That was terrible. But you hit a good point there with the network. And your network and sharing, and it's probably, it's much more cost-effective if you have centralized printers.
Correct.
Where you get, you could get a larger commercial, commercial-type-grade laser printer that's very few, is less working parts and it's gonna, to get the load instead of classroom, classroom, classroom.
Right. We did do that at the middle school this year. We took out all of the printers in the classrooms at the middle school this year and purchased seven, you know, networked laser printers that allow for duplexing and, and, you know, that so far, that we're only at the start, but so far, that's working, you know, for us.
Now, if you don't know this, just curious. When you talk about duplexing, you know, time on task with teachers and teachers need a quick handout, what is like the printing, the toner cartridge comparison? Is it same to like a copy machine, you run through a laser, run through a copier? Is that pretty similar?
I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to look at the cost per page as far as the, you know...
I think they're fairly close, though.
They may be. I don't know. And I don't know what agreement we have with the, you know, copying, you know, copies.
Right. You know, those contracts.
We are also trying to, to network some of our copiers. The copiers that we're getting are, are networked, so we're working with, with that as well so that you can print right to those machines and scan from them as well.
Mr. Mathew, I think you probably have an opinion on this matter as well.
Yeah, actually, I think the, the cost per print on the copiers is less than the laser printers themselves. It's really a matter of finding the right places to put those networked computers. But as Mr. Tran indicated, we are buying a lot of the new copiers or leasing a lot of the new copiers with network capabilities, because I think it's a valuable tool.
Okay, anything else? Tran, do you have anything else? At this stage, I would entertain a motion to declare the inventory in front of us as surplus to be dismantled and then take an eye.
So move.
Second?
So move, so moved by Mrs. Walker, seconded by Mrs. Ennis. Questions? Discussion? Being done? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? No abstentions? Motion passes. Five in the front room. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have a 403, 403B vendor approval. Mr. Himmelberger, Mr. Mathew?
The committee has a memo showing a list of the current vendors that have been previously approved by the school committee to offer 403B plans in the district. 403B plans, for those of you who don't know, are IRS tax-deferred savings plans, similar to 457s. 403B is a very specific code within the IRS and has had a little bit of a review over the past couple of years as we've introduced third-party administrators to make sure that all of these things were being handled correctly. One of our current local 403B vendors has changed their affiliation from the Legend Group, which still does have representation in the district, to offering products through Lincoln Investment. I would ask that the committee approve Lincoln Investment as a 403B vendor.
So move.
So, okay, so moved by Mrs. Walker?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gosher, and discussion. I have a major piece of discussion with this, Mr. Mathew, that you look at this list and by going with this local vendor, basically, they moved, they moved into a separate, into a separate subgroup. So now, we currently have employees that have their 403Bs with this, with this company here?
With?
Clifford?
Well, no, because they used to represent the Legend Group. The Legend Group now has a different vendor representing them.
To Lincoln Investment.
I'm sorry, say it again?
The Legend Group is the 403B plan that used to be represented by Clifford and Reno.
Okay.
It is no longer represented by Clifford and Reno. It's represented by a different vendor.
By Lincoln Investment?
Uh, no. I, actually, it's a representative of the Legend Group. I don't have his name on the...
By Legend Group, which way?
No name.
Okay, so what, my question is now, and I'll use a random superintendent, employee of, employee of the district. They are currently paying in that there's no, there's a, you know, 401Ks, there's matches and stuff like that. There's no match, comes out of your paycheck and it goes into that, a random superintendent, employee, whatever. Now, is, how is this gonna affect them? Are they gonna have to go sign up with someone else? Or are they gonna lose their affiliations? Or are they just gonna carry through if they're with this company, someone else may be administering, but they're still with the same plan?
That's exactly correct. If, if I signed up to be with the Legend Group, I am still with the Legend Group. Even though Clifford and Reno no longer represents the Legend Group, my plan is still with the Legend Group, and I have a different representative. What we're asking for here tonight is to improve Lincoln Investments as an additional 403B plan for the district.
And again, you were doing this, that, because you have that group and you're already with it, that you're not gonna have to go move your money somewhere.
That's correct. There's, nobody has to do anything.
Nobody's sitting with a debt account somewhere. There's no, no extra paperwork, it just, it's your letter.
Just be another offering for folks.
Just like if your mortgage gets sold off, you just get a letter and say, "Guess what? Now you're with these people."
Essentially, that's what happened for those.
Okay, that's, thank you very much for that clarification. Any questions, Mr. Mathew?
So then Clifford and Reno Associates represent now Lincoln Investments, and Lincoln Investments isn't on the current list, and we wanna put that on the list. And they have nothing to do with Lincoln Financial.
That's correct.
So then, at this point in time, Clifford and Reno have zero people in their 403B. What is the cost to the district?
No.
The cost is to the employee. No, I know, no.
There it is.
Okay. Anyone else? The motion, a floor. Do we have a second? Any further discussion?
Second. I think it was seconded.
Yeah, yeah, just moving to second, and nothing further. Call for a vote, to add them, to add the Legend Group, I mean, to add the Lincoln Investment, correct? Okay? And we already, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five in affirmative. No, no one against, and no abstentions. The motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Correspondence? Go right ahead.
Just had one that was included in your packet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a donation from RE/MAX Acclaim, and they donated 20 backpacks, each one full of supplies. And they have been given to the individual schools, and then they have been placed in And they have been given to the individual schools and then they have been placed in the hands of our neediest students. Ms. Suzanne Browning dropped those off and just wanted to publicly say thank you very much for that donation. From time to time, we get, especially around the beginning of school, we get some donations like this and they are very important for our neediest kids. So just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zach, I'm going to try and move you further up in the agenda here, but I think it's important for some of us for you to sit through so you get an input of something that's going on in town. And feel free, when you do have an opinion on something, you're appointed from your school to come through here. So don't be afraid to raise your hand if you have something with that, okay? But, I mean, I do want to respect you as a student and as individual that your time is valuable as well. So when you do have to go, you can feel free to go. If something comes up and you want to give a report early, I'm more than happy to put you on the agenda early. I'll put you on first if you like. And you can stay, you're welcome to stay as much as you want, but I realize you have to get your homework done and send you home in a decent hour.
Okay, wait, so you want me to go now?
I want you to go now.
Okay.
But you don't have to leave. If you want to leave after this, if you have work to do.
I really don't.
You can stay.
Stay. I will. I like you guys. Okay, so.
We like you.
Just going to borrow this for a sec.
Sure.
That's good. Okay. It's a very different school year from a student's perspective. I just have to say, like, the school is totally different. It's good. There are finally like a lot of more rules and discipline and it's just, it's good. It was a totally new environment on the first day and now people don't roam the halls. And it's just, it's really better, honestly. I just have to say that. And there are seven new teachers, so I just want to like welcome all of them to the school. There's Mrs. Russo who teaches English, Mr. Frickberg who was an aide last year, but now he's a real teacher. He was, yeah, okay. And there's Mr. Adams. He's the football coach and also a gym slash health teacher. Mr. Stone who teaches physics, Mr. Tyrell who teaches math, Mr. Carroll who teaches physics, Mrs. Karen who's the librarian from Bartlett. Ms. Chambers is back. She was in the elementary school for a year. And Mrs. Law is back to teach Spanish. So, yeah, that's nine. So it's very different. It's totally different. And I kind of have a question to you guys. Do you think that if student council sold parking spots, it would be bad? Like, I don't know, you know, I'm trying to make this sound okay.
Student council sold parking spots?
Not all of the parking spots, but like the best, so that we can make profit without really any expenditure.
So I can see entrepreneurship skills. And Zach, my advice to you is I think first you probably want to talk to your advisor, Mr. Wells.
Okay.
And then just move up from the chain of command. Because remember, you're beginning.
Well, okay, no, because we asked Mr. Wells and he said that it would be okay, but then you guys have been hearing things apparently. I don't know, so. No? Okay. All right, we're good. That's good. Excited for a good year. No opinions? Okay.
No opinions. Actually, I'll give you, it's very creative fundraising.
Oh, thanks.
You know, we're today, in today's time, when you see kids out there selling candy, selling soda, selling who knows what and then something like that, it's, I think it creates school spirit a little bit, too. People, you know, three or four people chip in for a nice, for the premier parking spot. They can probably decorate it, right?
Yeah, that's part of it, too.
Do you get a student of the month one?
I don't know. That could be good. We could throw that in there for free, like a really nice one. I like that. It's a good idea.
Or teacher of the month?
It's an idea.
Is there anything else?
No, that's good. Thanks.
Thank you. That was nice.
It was a good idea.
Very good. Okay, jumping back up the list, who corresponds, all set? Information and proposals. Subcommittee's, anything yet? I know we just started the school year. We'll get going on those. And I guess I was remiss and Senator brought to my attention that there was a calendar committee started last year. And it was an informal type committee, similar to like, similar to the bullying committee, which Mrs. Ennis will continue to run. So maybe if we get some input from the superintendent from our schools, if they have some representatives, if there's some parents and if a committee member or two wants to sit on that, I'd like to get that back, especially where the calendar, this year was a very hot topic issue. People are like, what's going on?
Very hot.
You know, to be able to sit, for people to sit on a committee and give their input on vacations, days off, time to approve that calendar. And we do have to approve the calendar and I think more collaboration would be wonderful. So I would like to re-up that from previous committee. Okay, from the superintendent.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things that I wanted to call attention to in your packets. You saw my update. I believe most everyone is aware of Michael's Law, which was signed into legislation this spring by the governor. And that was in response to the unfortunate passing of one of our football players a couple of years ago. And because of this law, every school district now will have defibrillators available in every building and medical emergency response plans for both each building and for the district. And it should go a long way towards preventing any future issues. So we are working on that. The timeline is somewhat compressed since it's, in the law, it has to be in by September 4th. And so we are working diligently with all of the parties to make sure that we have that completed. Special Ed Director's Search Committee is finishing up this week and I look forward to talking to the finalists that they present and hopefully have those for you at one of the September meetings. The middle school roof is just about finished. We'll find out Thursday at our building committee meeting. But it is, timing was perfect to get it done. And as part of Mr. Coonan's comments on the calendar, next summer, we are planning to end early and hopefully go back as late as we can so that we can complete the middle school renovation project. There's an awful lot of work that needs to be done next summer and we only have the summer to complete it. So we look forward to that. Also, we had a terrific opening and back to school. As our student representative alluded, we have lots of new faces throughout the district and really just along with our educator evaluation system that we put in and the fact that we are diligently working every day, every class to try and get back into level two from where we are as a level three district. The overwhelming support and the excitement was great to see. Also, in your packet, you'll see a letter from Lieutenant Sellers in the Oxford Fire Department about the 106 inspections that have to be done in all of our schools across the Commonwealth. And we're getting better each year and thanks to our custodial staff and a lot of cooperation from throughout the district, our schools really pass with flying colors and we're quite pleased with that. Also, we had two of our, we had three bus drivers retire, but two of our longer tenured drivers retire from driving the big yellows every day. And I certainly wanted to bring that up to the school committee's attention for your thoughts on that. But Beverly Marier and Shirley DeLuca both retired from driving the big yellows. And if you put their years together, it was even older than I am. So it's a long time.
Shirley was my kindergarten.
Shirley was my, probably my kindergarten.
So we thank them for their many years of service, along with Kathy Lancy out. And just as I say in my opening every year, the only employees that can never have a bad day are bus drivers. And they were, they will be missed. Also, I just call your attention to an award that I was fortunate enough to be awarded and will go for receiving it as a friend of Masbo, the Mass Association of School Business Officials. And it's a, it's a, all professional organizations really fulfill an essential purpose and I'm quite honored to have been recognized by them for the work that we have done over the years. And the last, I wanted to make sure that everyone knew about the MAS/MASE Conference, which is November 7th through the 10th. And feel free to check with Melissa in central office if you would like to have her register you. We do get a little bit of a break for early registrations. I think Mrs. Ennis is already planning to go. So that's Wednesday through Saturday or any part thereof, November 7th through the 10th down at the Hyannis Conference Center. And the last thing I have was something that reached my desk on Friday, certainly a hot topic, was the audit report from the state auditor's office.
Mr. Matthew, can I just interrupt you for one moment here? I want to take this, take that a little separately.
Sure.
You just went through a bunch of things in reports and I don't want to diminish any one of those items because I think there may be just a little bit, I know I have a couple of questions on those. So let's just stop, we just hold this piece and we can go right back and open up the floor to board members. So we'll do our questions and discussion items.
Sure.
Mrs. Ennis, did you, did you want to?
I do a couple of things. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we could go back to the emergency response plan, are we all, all schools defibrillator equipped yet?
Yes.
Everybody has them?
Yes.
Okay. Now that, I know that you have to have some training on that. So here's my question, because what happened with this family, I would never want anything to happen again. Let's put a scenario out there because I'm curious as how it would be solved. Practice is going on, we'll say football players. Somebody goes down, we're not quite sure what's happened. Who from the team, would it be the coach, the assistants, would run to this building? Or is it already on the field with them?
That is all part of the plan that we are finishing, working on this week because we have to really get this all done by Friday to submit. None of us plan on working over the weekend. It has to be in by next Tuesday.
Okay.
So all of that, I will be able to report out to the committee at the next meeting.
Okay, great, great.
All of the.
But I just wanted to make sure really that all the defibrillators are here.
Yes, they are.
Mr. Peterson's family, I believe, donated two. Let me see here.
You want to stay with this one? I have some, do you have anything else on this one, Mrs. Ennis?
On this one, there was one more thing. And the only other question I have is, in every building, how many people are trained?
There will be, and again, we are in the, I don't want to misspeak. We are in the process of delineating that, but there will have to be at least two.
At least two.
At least two.
That's all I have on that.
And maybe just to clarify, these automatic defibrillators are automatic, but in Massachusetts, it is required that there is somebody there actually monitoring them. And so that's what this plan speaks to and it's something that every district is working on this week to make sure that we get this up and running.
Thank you.
Mr. Ravelli?
So with that last comment, does that mean then if the person who is trained is not here, they're not supposed to use them?
Interesting question.
Right.
We've had that.
That would not make sense.
We've had that posed to the fire chief. And absolutely, these are very easy to use. These defibrillators, these automatic, are very easy to use. And if hypothetically, no one's there that has been trained, certainly, we would expect that somebody would step forward to use it rather than not use it. But this is all part of our plan that we are putting together this week. It's an excellent question because you try and plan for every possible scenario. And I think what this does is it really puts a lot of people at the table to come up with the resolution so that these plans, and the template is very, you know, very straightforward for the building and for the district as to what needs to be in place. But that question, geez, should I not use it because it's sitting there and I'm the closest one to it, but I haven't been trained? It's very easy to use.
Well, I have no doubt they're easy to use.
Yeah.
Like, you know, I've seen them.
And like I say, in most states you don't.
I fully understand.
Yeah.
I'm saying, you know, is that what they're requiring though, for people to be trained?
Yes. Yeah, the template does require that folks are trained, not only on that, but on all manner of responding to emergencies. And it might not just be an athlete on a field. It could be a teacher. It could be, we've had students, you know, that have had very sudden medical issues. So all of these things have to be addressed in the plan.
Okay, I just want to interject one question here. Do we as a district offer CPR AED training?
Yes, we do.
We do?
We offer that on our professional development days. And we do have a very good turnout from custodians, our bus drivers, school staff. So we do, we do offer that a couple of times a year.
Are your coaches trained?
Yes.
Your coaches are trained, it's part of the requirement?
That's part of the requirements. MIAA has come out with much stricter guidelines. All of our coaches have to be, along with the concussion policy that went into effect last year. Our coaches have to make sure that they are certified and trained.
You know, and you talk about the training. I'm CPI AED trained and it is. It goes from red to green and it tells you what to do. And I think it starts off by telling you, have you called 911?
Right.
And it's probably about, I would say, to an hour to a training. It's good for, it's good for every two years. So it is something that to continue that the district offers training, the more people that are trained, that's there, that does come up. Even if someone's, someone's card has lapsed, they've gone through it, that they understand it. Mrs. Ravelli?
Do we also offer their training to our students?
I'm not exactly sure. I can't answer that one, Mrs. Ravelli, if we do in any formal. Yeah, I'm not sure if we do offer that in any formal way.
I can think of many people that wouldn't take the babysitting class. What would be interested in taking a C P R class?
A C P R class.
And it's a very brief class.
Yeah, it's a good question.
It's not like it used to be.
Yep.
Exactly.
Had to go X number of Saturdays.
Just two hours.
A few hours.
Two or three hours. I just want to know a thing, too. Can you, I did walk into the meeting and just kind of stumbled into it in your medical emergency response meeting. Could you just surprise the committee and for the record, who was on this committee and some of the roles that people, what takes place with this committee?
This committee has school nurses, athletic director, building staff, emergency response personnel in town, police and fire, that all work, are working together to put this. We have fostered outstanding cooperation with our police department and our fire department. And the chiefs, you know, when we meet for our back to school meeting, are very cooperative and, you know, it, we really, with the advent of this program, I think we'll really have a very safe environment for everybody that goes to school, works here or does extracurricular activities.
Anything else on this topic? I'm just going to go, we're going to go right through the, his, through the superintendent's report that if he does, that there are issues, that he did bring up a lot of them, so, okay, you can check that one off. And let's go back to the first one. The first one, you talked about the Ole Miss roof project.
Project.
Any discussion, questions regarding that, the timetable? Okay. Now, I just do want to just comment that the weather has been cooperating excellent for those and they're getting cool mornings and not too bad at night.
And maybe just as a quick aside, for the pieces of the project still to go next summer, we have the entire HVAC system being replaced and re-engineered from the boiler room out to the individual controls, all the way through to the rooms. And that's a major lengthy piece of the project. But wrapped around that is replacing all of the exterior windows and all the exterior doors. And the windows certainly take, require a huge lead time, as we found out on the community center. So the middle school building committee is making sure that we are positioned to go out to bid, that we have all of the requirements met so that we can time that, so that we have that, the materials available in a very short 11, 12 week window next summer. And then if there is, the last piece of that, along with the exterior windows and doors, is the interior flooring. So this will be a very energy efficient building and with just the roof, there's always things that you run into and glitches, so that we hope that, you know, we have enough time next summer to finish the entire project.
Okay, moving on the list, any other, committee members have any other topics from the superintendent's report that they would like to discuss? Mrs. Ennis?
I would like to request that Shirley and Bev are invited to a school committee meeting to be recognized. Having traveled with Shirley a couple of times to Boston, and you know how Boston roads and streets interlock and there's no place to park, these are a few State House visits that we went on with a busload of kids. Shirley found a parking spot and there was no parking spots, but Shirley found one. So I think that probably Cheryl's driven hundreds of thousands of miles.
Lot of miles.
Lot of miles. She was recognized for her, what was it, 35 years, I think it was? We had her recognition for some of our staff. So I'd like them both, if they could, come to a meeting, just to be recognized before the committee.
I'll see if I can set that up for the next meeting.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on that? I think we can hold discussion on that one, it's just a whole thing in front of us. And anything else on the report?
Just the last piece.
That's coming.
Which is the big one.
That's coming, that's coming. I just want to make sure everyone's clear on this.
Yep.
Before we go. Okay. And please continue, sir.
Sure. We had an audit done of our ARRA grants. Everyone remembers February 2009, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. And from that legislation, many school districts and municipalities received federal funds. And the new auditor, Suzanne Bump, made it a part of her initiative to make sure that folks, entities that receive the ARRA funds, not just school districts, but also housing authorities and regional transportation entities, were audited. We were the first school district to be audited a year, summer of 11. Yeah, 2011. And they came in and did a pretty intensive audit. We didn't have a whole lot for them to look at because we only had one line item on the grants. But as you, I gave a copy of the reports in the packet, so you all have those. And they had a couple of findings. And I certainly don't need to debate the accounting principles. And obviously, if this is the auditors, the state auditors wishes, and certainly speaks to the principles laid out through various agencies, then we are in the process of complying. But I did want to call attention to a memo that the town's finance director wrote to the committee today. And she, in this, reviewed the ARRA state audit that I received on Friday. And she wanted to just speak to those two findings. The first one was the lack of internal controls and the risk assessment. And this, I guess you can look at this a couple of ways. However, the town and the school district does have internal controls. And she does note that the school department has complied with these. The existing controls, however, are not specific to the ARRA funds because the controls are set up to cover all funds from all sources and for all amounts of funding that the town receives. So, because they're not ARRA-specific, that was one of the findings. And so, our business manager, Mr. Matthew, and working with the town's financial team and the town's finance director, Mrs. Folio, to make sure that we do have those internal controls specific to the ARRA funding. The other piece of it was a risk assessment. And it was our belief, and certainly was perpetuated by DESE, that because we were not the direct recipient of the ARRA funds, that we were not the party that needed to develop the risk assessment. Our, the town's accounting company, firm, also agreed with that. However, the auditor wants that to be assessed locally. And so, we are in the process of complying with that. But both the town's auditing firm, as well as DESE, never gave us any guidelines to do that, to complete the risk assessment at the local level. It was always considered that since DESE was the grant recipient from the federal government, that they were the party that should implement the risk assessment, not the individual districts. But because they have asked... And an audit is not a bad thing. An audit is usually a good thing. Because it does point out, one, if you're doing everything properly, it gives everybody a sense that things are being done the right way. And when there are issues that are raised, and they are legitimate, such as these, it gives us a chance to correct them and to have these kinds of conversations. So, that speaks to the internal controls and the risk assessment. The other finding was $2,747 that was automatically distributed by the state. But at the time of the audit, which covered June 30th of 2011, that monies had not been used. Now, on the town side, a lot of the federal grants require the town to spend the money and then apply for the reimbursement. A lot of the school federal grants are given out in an initial amount and then requested as you need them throughout the year, until the end of the grant period. So, yes, we were the recipient of the $2,747, which was a percentage of the total grant that was automatically given to us, even though we did not request it as a department. But that was the DESE's accounting grant management regulations, that they would give us that small amount percentage of the grant. And then, as we spend it down, we apply on a monthly basis. So, the audit says, well, you can't do that. You can't have federal money sitting without being used. And their solution, which I think that the, both Mr. Matthew and Mrs. Folio have documented, is really not cost-effective. And that is, if we're going to get money that we didn't ask for in the beginning, to send it back and then request it again at a later time to try and match a small window is not very efficient. And there is a small cost, obviously, to managing that monies back and forth. So, however, that being said, they are absolutely right. The statutes and the standards and the generally accepted principles of accounting say you can't have money, federal funds, sitting and not being used. Even though we had made the decision to use that money after June 30th, so we didn't request it and had no plans to request it until the summer, by nature of the fact that we automatically received a piece of it in January, did allow the money to sit. What they are saying is, well, you should have a mechanism to send it back. Even if you didn't request it, send it back and then re-request it when you want to use it. So, we are working on that. And, you know, I think Donna certainly says that she and Mr. Matthew will incorporate that internal control to address this issue. It rarely, I don't think it's ever happened, and it's specific just to the ARRA funding. Because there was so much money at stake here, if you remember, that total stimulus was, you know, just shy of 800 billion. And there was so much money involved, and the amount of money that Massachusetts got was a significant amount. So, and I like, and I applaud Mrs. Folio for her last paragraph, that in her opinion, it's a relatively clean audit. And, you know, we had several state auditors looking at our ledger entries in both the town side and the school side. And, you know, for these two grants, they came up with these two findings. And so, I would like to, you know, publicly state that I'm very confident that the school department manages the money. It's our fiduciary role to make sure that we are accountable for every penny. And I'd also like to say that this town does an outstanding job of giving its taxpayers an excellent bang for their buck. And the town is exceptionally well-managed. You know, having looked and worked in other municipalities, you can see that we are very lucky. We are very fortunate to have expertise that manages, you know, a $30 million budget to the penny. And so, I have a lot of confidence in how we do our business. We will certainly take, and we have stated to the auditors, that we will take these findings and work to correct them. And certainly, the circumstances that allowed for these findings is not an everyday occurrence. But it's a finding, it's an audit, therefore, we will comply. And I think that speaks well for all parties. So, I know it's a little arcane in its background, and it's not something that we deal with every day, but I'd be happy to try and shed some more light on it. And if I can't, I'm sure Mr. Matthew can. How do I do? Not bad for an ex-business manager. So, but I just can't emphasize enough that we are very comfortable with where we are, with how we do business. And obviously, I think in my email back to the committee Saturday, the first thought is, here we go again, there's a misuse of public funds. And nothing could be further from the truth. And I'm very proud of the integrity that the town and the schools bring to managing the taxpayer money in this town.
You know, Mr. Lindberg alluded to it, I'll continue with it. The concept of transparency is, what you see out there, you see in the paper, and it's always out there, look what happened, look what happened, someone's stealing, someone's stealing the money, where's the money going? Okay? And then you're reading this report and going through this report, and it's not that the money was missing, that they're asking, and it's the first time I've ever heard of this, is to give money back. If you give money back, you're probably not going to get it back. Well, our dollars are so tight. And I ask one question. What's the difference between the mechanisms for the funding, for the Race to the Top, and the ARR-A? Because there's so many times you go to meetings, when I was on the middle school advisory committee, we have Race to the Top money that we can use for professional development for this. We have Race to the Top money that we use for subs, that we can use for these different programs, which was why I was put out there.
Right.
So, why would we... I'm sorry, it's a long question. But they're saying they're giving you a three-day window to return the money.
Right.
Please explain that.
Yeah.
Because I'm totally confused.
Well, what the DESE did with their grant management a couple of years ago was they gave you a three-day window each month to request the funding. And you're right, very few districts want to send it back because you don't know if you're ever going to see it again. But there is that three-day window each month that districts can request funds. Race to the Top, which was a, I guess, a politically very astute move by the administration, is a subset of the ARRA money. You know, out of that almost 800 billion, the Race to the Top funding across the country totaled a little over 5 billion. And Massachusetts received 250 million of that, of which about half went directly to districts who volunteered to be Race to the Top districts. And the other half went directly to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed to disperse through a variety of programs. So, the Race to the Top is a subset, or it's a part of the ARRA total. But both of them, because they were such high-profile programs, had a tremendous amount of scrutiny. And certainly, that, I think that's why, as Mr. Matthew can attest, the amount of quarterly reporting on these funds and the amount of transparency is the reason why over 100 districts in the state chose not to take Race to the Top funding. Because it was a very complex procedures, and it did certainly take a lot of time. And so, you know, out of the total number of districts in the state, not all of the districts took Race to the Top funding. We were certainly of the belief that the money was worth the effort. And we had no trouble with the compliance piece of it and the reporting piece of it. And this audit certainly speaks to the fact that we did have a couple of pieces that we needed to correct. And so, I'm confident that we are correcting them.
How much did we get, about $460,000?
Between the ed jobs bill and the Race to the Top, yes.
Right. And that's for over four years, so...
Correct.
And again, that money helped keep teachers in the classroom, to cut down class size, did not?
Yep.
Yeah.
It certainly helped defray, from 2009 forward, a lot of money that either the town would have had to have come up with, or it would have forced us to reduce programming and staffing even more than we did. And you saw, this monies came in to the districts on the fourth quarter of 2009. And, you know, the state desperately needed that funding to balance the school department books for that fourth quarter. And then, you know, 2010, 11, 12, those ARRA funds kept a lot of districts from further eroding education and municipal services, police and fire. So, the problem was, when that ARRA money was done, then that created a funding cliff, as they like to say. And then, it was up to the districts and towns to try and find a way to realize that money that was then lost. What you couldn't use the ARRA money for was for recurring salaries, if I remember correctly.
You could certainly hire people with it, but it was not a good idea because we knew that the ARRA would be going away.
Exactly.
So, you did not want to commit yourself to an ongoing expense.
And so, what many districts used it for was programming, for technology, and those sorts of things.
Also for health insurance, wasn't it?
Yes.
That's right. For a stopgap.
Saved a lot of districts, including us.
And that's what I just said. It kept teachers in the classroom. If you couldn't use it for that, you're talking about a huge layoff coming up.
Right. So, I mean, you know, you can argue, you can debate the merits of government largess, and certainly, this was as big as it gets. But it did preserve, for many districts, programming and needed education and municipal jobs as well. So, but it was certainly, and continues to be, a very highly scrutinized set of rules that we follow when we report it and when we are audited. And, you know, I think, you know, Mr. Matthew and Mrs. Folio will work with the town's auditing firm to make sure that we develop the appropriate responses so that we have the controls in place and so that we don't get, you know, these issues ever again.
Now, is it correct to say that a directive never came from them? But there was, I read through the report, there was a webinar that stated that maybe for effective oversight, you may want to use some longstanding counting practices. So, it never exactly said you have to do it this way.
Yeah, I mean, in the hubbub, which is our daily lives, DESE did sponsor webinars. And certainly, the fact that this major issue about holding on to federal funding, I mean, we didn't, and it wasn't a $2 million amount, it was a $2,000 amount.
Yeah, it's very minimal amount.
So, you know, we felt that we would use it in July, but now we know better. So, if we ever run across that situation again... And I'm sure that DESE is also working on their practices so that they don't put districts in that position as well.
Okay. I know I'm dominating the conversation down here. Any questions from other board members with this, Mrs. Ennis?
I just have more of a comment, I think. Having discussion both with our chairperson and also our superintendent in regard to this issue here, my first thought, right off the bat, when I saw that article in the paper, was, here we go. Okay? And this is one of those times where you stop and you wait for the information to filter through properly to the committee than to the public. After having conversation with Donna Folio and after also visually seeing the people that were here for this audit, politically speaking, which I don't do often, I will do now and say that the state that was, that came in, the members of the state that came in, deserved to be audited for the way that they conducted themselves. I think that Donna Folio and I also were in agreement with saying, Martha Coakley probably would be very interested in hearing how this all went down. I don't think in any way, shape, or form, the communication controls were in place where any of this is concerned. Reading the report, like Sue had just pointed out to me, it's a year old. This report is one year old. I mean, really? Well, let me, can I just, let me just finish? I think that as far as this community goes with our grants, we should be very, very proud of the way that they are controlled and the way that our finance director oversees, our business manager, work together in making sure that they are distributed properly. I have never heard of any problems with any of our grants. And for $2,747, they should be ashamed of themselves for the way that they conducted themselves. Donna is right, it was a clean audit. And this community and this district should be more than happy with that and proud of that. So, interning what the press wrote in the TNG... So interning what the press wrote in the T N G, he's not here, is he, to hear the answers? The reporter is not here, I don't know if he's called you, he doesn't know what actually happened, he got one side of the story, he did, you weren't quoted, you're, you, you were not quoted to answer to this. So even though this, in my opinion, with all of the issues we have going on, this is a small issue, it really is, when it comes right down to it, when you look at the big picture, I think that we should be very proud of the way that we have conducted all of our grant funds in the past, and we will continue to do so in the future. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I think you probably want to answer my question, so you're, you first, and I may have a follow-up.
Thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Ennis, for those comments. I, I did want to say that certainly the article in the T N G, I thought was very well-written, and certainly, they did a good job with what the information that they had. At the end of the day, we pride ourselves, we, the, the school department, and, and the town, but the school department prides itself on making sure that we follow all of the accepted principles of accounting, to make sure that we go out of our way, to make sure that we're complying with all of the mandates that we get from, both from, from D E S C as well as from the feds. And, and audit is, is an audit, and I'm pleased that this was brought to our attention, and we will correct it. But I, I think it's a little, I use the analogy, it's a little bit like taking a bowling ball to kill a mosquito. But at the end of the day, it is what it is, and, and we will correct it, and make sure that we provide the appropriate controls for our annual audits, both federal and, and state, and, and through the town.
Now, this report was issued on Friday morning, and was probably sent that month or Tuesday, I looked, there's a postmark on the envelope.
It was dated, the report was dated last Thursday, but I received it via email Friday late morning, I didn't pull it off the email until Friday afternoon. But, you know, that's, that's okay. I mean, you, you can go on in the state auditor's website, and you can see a lot of what they've done.
Now, but my question in the report, and the article in the newspaper alluded to it, is that you were very well aware, and are you currently working on the problems that this audit brought out? And the reason I say that is you, there's a section here, audit response.
Mm-hmm.
And I want to quote it, "Regarding the system of internal controls, the town does, does have an internal control system which covers all areas of expenditure controls mentioned for all funds. However, we recognize it is not A R R A specific. We are in the process of updating this plan to specifically include A R R A related funds." Could you, could you tell the committee on or about when you responded to this plan?
Well, sure.
Or was it post-audit?
No, no, the auditors came and visited us June and July of eleven, and we were still living in Sigourney Street, and somewhere, we had a couple of, of responses from them, cross-checking information, and I think it was probably in the end of eleven or spring of twelve.
No, it was May of two thousand twelve.
May of two thousand twelve, Mr. Math, that we got the preliminary draft of the findings.
Okay.
And so that's when Mr. Matthew and Mrs. Folio, myself, and, and the town's auditing firm responded to the preliminary findings. We didn't know when the report was coming out, or how it was going to be delivered, but, but we were aware of the findings, yes, sir. Sure.
And with those, as I said, as I previously stated, maybe, Mr. Math, you can address this one? Are, are controls being currently, currently put in place to, to maintain or develop accurate accounting standards, industry standards, that the grant is specifically looking for? We following what they say you have to, to distribute the money?
Yes, I actually have a meeting set up with Mrs. Folio and the town auditor on Friday morning, to go over where we stand with the work that I've done so far on the A R A specific document, and come up with the, the game plan to finalize this and implement it.
Anything else? Anyone else? I'm just going to make a comment. Looking at this, and I'm very, very well satisfied with the information that was given. Again, this report comes out on a Friday, and the report, and it's a, it was a report in Saturday's paper, and, and I did get a request from a, from a news source to comment on this, and obviously, oh, the, okay, sorry, and I respectfully declined, where it did not have the report in front of me, that I have some excerpts, and be able to talk and go through what the whole thing means. And it's no disrespect to her or, or the newspaper, is that this is the information. And sure enough, yes, city or out there, I was sitting over here at a football game, and I hit the elbow, "Hey, who's stealing from the town now?" "No, no, no, we'll wait and see, we'll withhold all comment until..." And I think this is very healthy, that, that we go through this meeting, and, and I guess, this, and my message to the superintendent is where information is very powerful, so when reports do, like this do come out, and as I think Brenda had asked for a PDF, if you have it, get it out to the board, especially this.
And I did, I did email that to the committee.
Yeah, you got it this morning, yeah. That when, even as, as innocent as you think it may be, but it is an audit, you know, and it does come from the Office of the State Auditor, Suzanne M. Bump, who is elected by the people. Oxford was one of the first communities that went through, and I'm not going to put words in anyone's mouth, but when those people came through, they had to find something. Any auditor is going to come in, they're going to find good things, and they'll find some area for improvement. And they found an area for improvement, and I am very satisfied that we are on the risk to, on, on the way to improvement, and no, we're not missing any money, we didn't return any monies, and everything is intact.
And, and just one final comment, you know, Mr. Matthew made a very good point to me this morning, as we were discussing it, and he said that, you know, if there was anything major that had been discovered, we would have found out about it a lot sooner than, than this report then was issued. So, you know, I'm very, you know, I'm very thankful that, that we are as well-run as we are, and we will respond to the findings and make sure that we comply. All right, end of story.
And so, I'll finish. It was a very healthy discussion.
Absolutely.
Is that, no, people getting, getting ideas, that was from the business manager's office, his, his interworking, interworkings with Donna Folio, Town Accountant, Superintendent coordinates, and feeding information to us, and so we can make an intelligent decision on where we stand in, with how this committee's going forward. Great, thank you to all parties, thank you for everyone's patience in going through this with, we could have heated, and worked out fine.
And that's the end of my report.
That's it?
That's it.
I thought there was something else.
You must have told your wife you're going to be home early tonight, huh?
No, I, I, I have everything, I think.
Everything you think.
I've covered everything.
How about your award?
Oh, that, I just mentioned it briefly, it's not any big deal.
Okay. Mr. Matthew?
Real briefly, I know the conditions of schools in our return back to school last week was already touched upon, but I do want to publicly thank the custodial staff and all of the support staffs in all of the schools to help get ready for the start of this year. They really did an excellent job. I think the committee's investment in them, with the funds available at the end of last year, in buying some new equipment, et cetera, you can see the difference, even in the floor that, in, in front of us right now, you know, having the proper equipment brings out the proper level of cleanliness, and we can really see the hard work this year that the custodians have always been doing. So thank you very much. In terms of transportation, obviously today was day four. When I wrote the memo, we were at one, one and a half days, and everything looked good then, and I think everything looks even much better now. Durham has done a very good job of making sure that all of the small issues that we have been talking to them about for a number of years have been addressed, such as the names on the buses, the numbering of the buses. The communication has been wonderful, I think they've done a very good job of making sure that everything was caught up to date. I had mentioned in my memo that it was my expectation that the middle of this week, meaning today, tomorrow, and Wednesday, we would be catching up with all of the late registrations, et cetera, et cetera. Durham took extra time on Friday, stuck around, made sure that everything that they had as of Friday end of day was incorporated into, into the routes for, for this morning. So all of the changes that we had been talking about with parents, you know, for, for going up this road, or, or switching the stop, et cetera, have been implemented. We still have a couple of smaller issues to take a look at, in, in terms of requests and those sorts of things, but to be where we are on day four, I'm very, very pleased, and I'm very happy that we're progressing. The one thing that I did state in the memo here, and I think is very important going forward for transportation in the district, is we need to class, do a good job of coming up with some definitive classifications of roads and the conditions, and, you know, just as an example, on this particular road, children should not be walking at all, regardless of age, but on a different road, perhaps it's okay for high school students to walk down and meet across the street, but not for elementary students. And for middle school students, maybe it's okay to walk, you know, X number of feet from their house to a stop, but we don't want them going past, you know, blind man's curve over on the left, or whatever the case may be. I spoke with the town DPW today, and it sounds like the G P, G I S system in town is going to be getting an upgrade or, or an overhaul, so what we might be able to do is piggyback onto that effort, and actually have those classifications up online for people, so they can review that as well going forward. But I think that'll take away a lot of the questions on routing going forward, you know? This road, the, the classification is we go down it, that's, that's what we're going to do, and that's how the routes will be developed. So I think that, that's the one last piece, as I look at it over the last three years, that we, that if we take care of this year, the bus routes and the bus routing will be very straightforward, and I think we've got a very good process for recognizing new enrollees and getting them on board as quickly as possible.
All set?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthew. School community members, unfortunately, Miss Gausch was on the weather, she had to leave, so she, that's why she stepped away from the table, Mrs. Walker.
I don't have anything to add to all that we've heard this evening. It's, it is exciting to be in a good place financially, and the level of cleanliness is just beautiful. And I think Zach's remarks were well-received, we're, we're glad that he's happy with the way things are going.
Thank you, Zach, for really said, for, for really relaying that message. You know, Mrs. Walker picked up on it, Mr. Matthew picked up on it. Thank you, it's, and it makes it run, so make it run.
Thanks.
Mrs. Walker, any others?
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Ravelli?
Well, I've been a part of the search for the new special education director, and it's been pretty exciting, and I'm confident by the end of tomorrow evening, we'll have a few people to send off to Mr., Mr. H. there. The one concern that I have is the same concern I've brought up now for several meetings. We had one applicant who spent three hours, it was an hour and a half trip, took her three hours to find the superintendent's office, because we still don't have signage. It's an issue, whose time has come, and I know it's not your job to put up the sign, but if there's anybody that we can knock on a door for. He's, he's looking like he wants to say something.
Yeah, no, I, I thank Mrs. Ravelli for the reminder, because the ground has definitely thawed.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
It's thawed, I know. But I need to speak with the town manager and make sure that we can then draw up the plans, to make sure we get the right size in the right place that says the right thing, and I have it on my to-do's.
You know, in the interim, you know, even considering, I don't, I don't know, is the address different on the other side of the building? Because the front of the building is one address, and that's where, and people come there, and it's just this big building with no cars in the lot.
The, the address, yeah, the address is for Maple Road, right, which is off of the other side. A lot of times, people, if they're trying to find us...
It's by the sign that has no building.
Right. And a lot of times, people are trying to find us, and they punch in for Maple Ave, and they get up to North Oxford and don't see a building. So, it's much easier to direct folks coming from out of town to 351 Main Street and the white church, and take the driveway down between them to the big sign that says Community Center, and we are on the top floor. That's much easier. However, some signage is necessary. Let me see what I can do.
We'll, we'll give you a minute to write it down.
No, it's already done.
If you can't, I'd be more than happy to help.
I'll let you know if I need the backup.
Put the sign in.
Sign's right across the street now, I, I, you know, we'll find a way. Of course, somebody could drag it across the street, I don't know, anything. It's, it's gone unfounded.
Let me see what I can do.
And potentially, we, you know, we could have lost an excellent candidate, and I, I felt bad, actually, for the candidate, who had to come in, very flustered, and she, an extra hour and a half, she left the travel time, I mean, that's, so, and she barely made the ticket, so that's, you know, we need to fix that, huh? It's an easy fix, I think.
Hmm, I'm hop, I'm hoping.
Maybe we could put balloons out on Main Street.
There you go.
Very good. All set, thank you, Mrs. Ravelli. Mrs. Ennis?
Thank you. Couple of things. I would like, if we could, I'd like to make a motion that we send a letter of appreciation to Judy Hargony for her forty-three years of service. Not that Judy is going anywhere, but I think it's nice to be recognized, and I'd like to do that for her, being, she's one of our senior teachers, one of our veterans. I know that she has had thousands of students, that she's, she's been able to touch their lives in such a way, I think, that is something none of these, none of these people will ever forget, and even us adults, that, you know, I, I know that for me, she has become a wonderful friend, and, and I just want her to know how much we thank her for her forty-three years of service in this one district. So if we could do something like that, I would really appreciate it.
I will second the motion.
Thank you.
Discussion? I just have to add, I, I had misogyny for, for a teacher, and she's just absolutely, and then, and then just to change, change it up, and, you know, go forward in life, and come, when I came Monday for a new teacher orientation, and who's written, and big smile, mentoring other teachers, really, children, teachers, anyone, anyone she touches, this really has just a positive influence on life, and great motion, Mrs. Ennis, thank you. Anyone else?
She's an amazing woman.
I, I will just add to Brenda's suggestion that as a member of historical group in town, she has been a moving force to help our young people learn about the community and our own historical beginnings. If we could never have accomplished what we have if it hadn't been for her dedication.
Thirty years, yes. Every project in the young kids is instrumental. Wonderful, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Four in affirmative? Okay. Zero pose, zero stitches. Very good point.
Okay, thank you. I think it's important for all of us to kind of remind ourselves, the policies that we write, we also have to follow, and these being public buildings and public grounds, there's no smoking, and that means no smoking for students, teachers, school committee members on any of these public grounds. So if we write it, we own it, we need to follow it, so I just think that's a good reminder. I'm wondering if the graffiti on the back of this building, I know it's kind of been tackled in some way, is there anything more that's going to be done to those two spots out back? Can you check, or?
Yeah, we can certainly look at it. I know, you're right, it has weathered and it has been addressed a while back, but we can certainly look at it to see if there's...
Great, that's great.
Something that could make it even better.
That'd be great. In the past, we have discussed many, many times, to celebrate our student achievement here in this district, how important it is that we bring out the best that Oxford has to offer. And I know that we, we did some of it last year, but I'd like, Mr. Superintendent, through you, Mr. Chairman, to give us updates and bring these students and their families into the meetings, maybe more often, so that it's time for us to toot our own horn, so to speak. And I, I like the idea that they bring their mom, their dad, or grandparents, aunts, uncles, brothers, sisters, whatever, but they get recognized for something that, they kind of set themselves apart and have achieved something that maybe a teacher thought they would never be able to achieve. It doesn't always have to be the high learners. So I'm hoping that we can, we can do some of that this coming school year. What else do I have here? Do we have anything that's going to go on warrant for town meeting?
We do have the possibility of an addition...
We do have the possibility of an additional appropriation.
Do we know how much that will be?
Approximately $130,000.
Or?
Based on the funding formula, when we went to town meeting and voted, the state budget had still not been finalized.
Okay.
With the final adoption, it looks like the local aid amount, which the town, you know, gives us above and beyond our net school spending amount, was increased and different than what was in the town meeting budget plans. So it's my understanding that that will be appropriated at the special town meeting for the school district.
Okay, all right, great.
May I just interrupt, Mrs. Ennis?
Yes, please.
In other words, we're not sponsoring the article, it's, the money's come in, and it's, and it was going to be not given to us.
That's my understanding of how this is going to work.
How, okay, so it's nothing that, I say, wait a minute, the warrant's coming up and closing, and we weren't told of anything, so we're not asking for money, but the money's come in to be earmarked for the schools from the state. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Helmerberger, congratulations on your award. That is, as I had said to you when I read it, that's newsworthy, that should be a press release, and I hope that you will take advantage of that. And that's all I have, sir, thank you.
Thank you. A lot of my stuff has been hit, but I also want to follow up on that. Tim Berger was recognized by the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials in a letter of August 16, 2012, which I'll read to the record. Dear Alan, it is my honor to formally announce that you were recently selected as one of this year's recipients of the coveted Friend of Masbo Award. This award is presented to those who, by their words and deeds, have provided special and noteworthy support to Masbo in the fulfillment of its mission, the betterment of education. Criteria for selection, that the nominee has made a significant contribution in facilitating the process by which school business officials contribute to the education of students in their school districts, has consistently, in a long-term basis, provided significant assistance to Masbo in the implementation of its various functions and responsibilities, and has provided assistance to Masbo, which is considered above and beyond expectations. More specifically, your hard work has resulted in the development of Masbo's new five-year strategic plan, which is designed to focus the organization's resources and efforts upon enhancing the competence and knowledge of school business officials for the ultimate betterment of education in the Commonwealth. Your ability and professionalism have long been recognized and valued by Masbo since you joined the network. And I know you are a genuine source of pride for the Oxford School District. Please share a copy of this announcement with your school committee, very truly yours. John A. Crafton, MASBO Executive Director. Again, Alan, congratulations.
Thank you.
It's a wonderful award, and I can't think of a more deserving individual. In my short time here, the work that you've done, the openness and what we see, and the being the superintendent when you're called upon, like in this past situation over the weekend, I talked to him a couple of times, and I need this information right away. And he kept saying, don't worry, don't worry. I said, oh, no, we want this information immediately when those things come out. So thank you for that.
Very welcome, thank you.
Let's see, and again, just two other members brought up a school open, I thought it was wonderful. There are bugs. My own children have some bugs with busing, and it takes a little while to coordinate things, and everyone's human, and it takes time. But things do work out. Be persistent. The business manager and the school official people within the schools, I think, are just going out of their way to try and accommodate people. And again, the cleanliness is wonderful, and what that builds, it really builds excitement. As everyone knows, I'm an educator myself, about 20 years or so, with public schools. In the same way, just the energy is such an exciting time, kids, for teachers, that rejuvenation from the summer, come back, and if you go back to school, go back to school, everyone loves it. They really do, and it's really, and you show, I see it in my own children, they're both at the middle of school, and they absolutely love it. They can't wait to go to school, and they come home, and all they do is talk about the great things that are happening in school. So. Okay, anything else? Committee, open the floor. Any comments on the floor? I will close the floor. Executive session?
There is no need.
There is no need. Alan, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, go ahead. Second?
So moved in second, and no discussion, call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes, four in affirmative, and one absent. Thank you, and have a great night.
What were you going to ask me? You going to ask me something? You got something to tell me, say it quick.